I'm going to be acting as the chair tonight. This is the April 9th zoning board meeting, zoning board of adjustment meeting. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as the audio and video recordings will be available later at Nashua, New Hampshire.gov Agenda Center. Select the zoning board of adjustment. The chair is in control of the proceedings and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. The board follows the meeting protocols, procedures identified, and bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. If there are any questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again. Before the board deliberates and determines an outcome, this is before the board deliberates and determines an outcome, excuse me. A timer is used to manage the speaking time. Mr. Fark of the planning department will notify us when one minute is remaining and again when the speaker's time has expired. Note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we're going to be hearing requests of deviations from the National Zoning Code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the city of Nashville by laws and state of New Hampshire by statute, a minimum of three or more firm votes are required to approve an application. In addition, this board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting board members is present in this meeting. Tonight, we have four. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we render a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. The written rehearing request must be received by the city of Nashville Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Fark of the Planning Department for more information. For this meeting, we have the following four board members in attendance. Myself, J.P. Boucher, Mr. Jay McCarron, and Mr. Josh Neely. And we also have the following alternate member in attendance, Mr. Andrew Sylvia. In addition to board members, we also have to my left, Mr. Carter Fark, who's the deputy planning manager. We're going to start this meeting by taking roll call attendance. Mr. Sylvia?
Here.
Mr. Neely?
Present.
Mr. McCarron?
Present.
And Mr. Boucher is presenting. Tonight, usually if there was more than, if all the board members were here, the alternates would participate in discussions and all our meeting, asking questions and discussion. But because we are only four board members tonight, Mr. Sylvia will vote in all of the cases presented this evening unless there's a recusal. Okay, so I'm going to read the first case into the record. So I'd like to open a public hearing for Timothy and John, Timothy, John, and Catherine Grifeta, owners of 22 Sioux Avenue, Sheet 138, Lot 355, requesting a special exception for land use code section 190-36, section B, and 190-47, section B, for a major home occupation for an in-home childcare facility for up to five children. It's in the I-9 zone, Ward 1. Is anybody here to present that case? Come on up. And again, just speak in the mic and just give us your name and address for the record.
Sure. Catherine Grifeta, 22 Sioux Ave.
Go ahead, just tell us what you want to do.
Sure. Good evening, and thank you for considering my request to open an in-home daycare. A little bit about me, I'm a mom of two boys, ages four and two. I have been a nanny for 10-plus years, starting in Hollis, New Hampshire, and currently employed in Chelmsford, Massachusetts. I have worked for three families long-term, with each family having multiple children. I know firsthand the challenges of finding a quality daycare. My oldest child was placed on several childcare waiting lists, and it took us 12 months to secure him a spot. I had to rely on family to care for him once I returned to work. It goes without saying that quality daycare is in high demand. There are many, many positive reasons to send a child to a home daycare. When care is consistent, developmentally appropriate, safe, and healthy, children thrive. Home daycare is prepare a child for school readiness. It helps them reach developmental milestones. It boosts language skills. The children form social interactions, learn to share, wait their turn, and begin to understand the concept of rules. Fostering independence is key. I can attest that parents benefit as well. Home daycares provide a parent with job security and a steady income. More mothers can enter the workforce. Access to a high-quality at-home daycare enables parents to miss fewer days of work, work more hours, and all around be more productive. It goes without saying that parents who get a well-deserved break from their children are happier. As stated in my initial application, a home-based daycare at my house at 22 Sioux Ave would have no adverse effects, excuse me, no adverse effects to existing traffic or pedestrian safety. Sioux Ave is easily accessible from Broad Street. Child drop-off and pickup times would be staggered. The integrity of the neighborhood will not change. Lastly, I will abide by the land use code 190-36 and RSA 170E. Finally, I ask that you vote in my favor of me opening an in-home daycare at my home at 22 Sioux Ave. I look forward to proceeding with the state of New Hampshire to obtain a license. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Sylvia?
Okay. I mean this as a compliment. We got several complimentary emails from your neighbors.
Oh, wonderful.
And I guess, when you were planning this process, were you considering possibly opening up a business for daycare? Sounds like you're definitely qualified for it.
I would like to eventually, yes. That is the ultimate goal.
And when you do that, that'll be at a different location?
It would, well, it'd be at my house.
Okay.
Yes.
So right now, what you're looking for is just, you'd come back if it'd be more than five children at that point?
I would like to start with five. I know where I'm comfortable at right now. I currently have three that I nanny, plus two of my own that I do sometimes have. So I would like to start with five in my home.
Okay, because I believe past five, there's different criteria.
Okay. I understand.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor for this application? Okay, seeing none, we have two letters of support. I'll quickly read those into the record. This is from Michael Donald, from 23 Sioux Ave. I'm the neighbor across the street at 23 Sioux Ave. Katie is a great candidate for what she's seeking to accomplish. She is very outgoing and awesome neighbor. She's great with kids. I see no issue with having a daycare run inside her home. She watches out for kids once in a while, and she watches out for, I don't know, for his child or some kids, but she's the best. I do not think it will cause any disturbances to the neighborhood, as she is a very respectful neighbor. I am certain that she will respect the neighbors and not cause any disturbances. I hope she is able to start her daycare at home. Next email we got in support is from Albert O'Donnell from 74 Searls Road. Having known Catherine for about two years, I can attest her exceptional qualities and suitability for this role. Catherine possesses a natural affinity for children, coupled with an unbelavering passion for her well-being and development. With her extensive experience in working with children, I am confident her ability to create a secure environment where parents can entrust their children with peace of mind. Okay, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. I'm going to like to start. Mr. Neely?
I'm generally in favor of this application. The house is fenced in yard. Fence looks like it's in good shape. Actually, that road is a relatively slow road, very wide. It's going to allow easy parking. You know, it looks like it's basically a single-car driveway, so I would anticipate the parents will be parking on the road. But having sat there on Saturday for a few minutes doing a drive-by, I think one car passed me in the five minutes, so not a high-traffic area. Multiple folks have given us letters of support, so for those reasons, I am in favor of this application.
Mr. Sylvia?
It was before my time on the board, but from what I can understand, the last daycare approved by the ZPA was last June on East Stark Street, and this application looks similar to that. And plus echoing what Mr. Neely said, I drove by as well, and it looked like everything met the standards. And it sounds like from the application, there'd be drop-off. I'm not, I just wanted, I think that's what's happening, so the parking isn't as significant as it might be without that, so, thank you.
I also am in support of the application, and as attested by the applicant, section 160-190-36, childcare facility, special conditions, she attested that, she would be following that, so I'm in support of the application. Any other comments? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the application of Timothy, John, and Catherine Grifeta owners, and Catherine Grifeta applicant of 22 Sioux Avenue, requesting a special exception from land use code section 190-36B and 190-47B for a major home occupation for an in-home childcare facility for up to five children be granted. We find that the proposed use is listed in the table of uses, that it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, that it will not overload public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal system, that the special regulations are fulfilled, and that it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents. And in fact, we have supportive testimony from residents via email.
Second by Mr. Neely, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's four to nothing, and this area application has been approved.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Just be aware, again, to tell everybody, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Probably highly unlikely, but just be aware.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good evening.
You're welcome. I appreciate it.
With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number one, and open the public hearing for case number two.
Thank you so much.
Case number two is for Enrique and Josefina Ruiz, owners of 34 Bell Street, Sheet 135, Lot 80, requesting the following variances from land use code section 190-16, Table 16-1, to encroach two feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback on May Street, and two, to encroach two feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback on Bell Street. Both request to construct a second-story addition onto an existing house in the I-9 zone, Ward 3. Is anybody here to present a case? Come on up. Again, just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good night. My name is Enrique Riz. I live in 34 Bell Street, Nashua.
Just tell us what you want to do.
I'm just looking to upgrade a little bit of the house. It's built in 1940s, so I'm looking to redo the whole section. It's pretty much the same floor plan, same foundation. I'm just going to get rid of the wood section, looking to get more insulation, get it more proportional. I did a garage around six years ago, so now I'm trying to tie it up, the garage with the existing house, so that's why I'm going a little bit higher on the old part. So we tried to remove all the wood part, leave the foundation, and just rebuild it, just to make it more efficient, more upgraded, and more, pretty much make it go with the garage that we built.
So basically, to understand, you're just pretty much going to demolish the existing structure and just rebuild on the same foundation?
Correct.
Same size that it was, and just going up higher?
It's gonna, it's, I have, that's what the meeting is, they told me I had to go to variance, because I'm extending in the backside.
Right. The existing, existing, this thickness is existing, yeah, right. I understand.
So it's actually just going to extend four feet in the backside, which is a half.
All right, so you're not extending it any more than it is now?
No, no, no.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you for that. Anything else?
That's it.
Is there any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you very much. Your application was pretty complete. You're all set, you can sit down.
Question, like, is this, could be a grandfathered-in from the house that is existing, instead of be doing the meeting?
Not really. If a foundation is within a setback, it's considered grandfathered-in. But when you go up above it, that part of the construction is not in the setback, so that's why you're here, for those variances, because you're going above. The setbacks go from the ground all the way up through to the sky. Even if you're a one-story and you're going to a two-story, you still need a variance for that second story. That's why you're here.
Okay. Even if you use an existing same foundation, because it already encroaches into the setback, and that's, your house probably predates some of the zoning, and that's right?
Well, it was built, he said it was built in the 40s. Zoning came into the city in like 1930, 31. So the setbacks have remained similar, but since he's building up into the setback, it still requires a variance.
All right. Yes, Mr. McCarron?
So I guess I was a little confused by the application. Are they not also extending it in the rear?
There's a little area in the rear that they are doing.
Because in looking at the plot plan, it looked as though there was a four-foot extension in the rear.
Yeah, I'm extending it in the backside, which they have the setbacks.
He hasn't, because both of the variances are to both of the front yards. It's a corner lot, so he's going into a setback on Bell and also on May Street. Two little sections, but the one that's going in the back, that's just a small portion of it, because a lot of it is out of the setback. It's out of the front yard setback.
Okay.
And the use will still be a single-family?
Correct.
Okay. There's no use issues or any danger issues.
Any other questions? Are you all set?
All set.
Okay, you can sit down, Brandon.
All right, thanks.
Is anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? You want to speak in favor? No? Okay. Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Neely?
So I was interested to see if the back neighbor was going to show up tonight. I feel like that's going to change, there's going to be a sunlight issue there, so I was interested to see if they were going to show up. They did not, so I will take that as the neighbor's tacitly being in favor of this. It's definitely interesting architecture, and I get what they're trying to do. They're trying to match the whole thing up. It is going to be aesthetically more pleasing when they're done, and while they are going just a few feet, you know, it's a challenging lock, it's on a corner. It is an older neighborhood, so I really don't see any reason not to be in favor of this, so I am in favor of this application.
I'm also in favor of the application for the reasons spoken to, and I think, again, I can see, you know, where the applicant wants to improve the structure. And, again, the only concern I had was really on the rear side, but that doesn't seem to be an issue here tonight, so that was my only thought for this case, so I'm going to support the application. Mr. McCarron?
I also support the application. I was curious to see if there were going to be any concerns from the neighbors. It is definitely large. That said, I think to Mr. Neely's point on the architecture, the addition overwhelmed the existing house, so I think bringing it into proportion kind of makes sense. I did notice that there was another house, kind of catty-corner, which seemed similar, so I don't think it's out of character with the area, and the use itself seems reasonable, so I support the application for those reasons.
Any other discussion? Would you like to make a motion? Mr. McCarron?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that the application of Enrique and Josefina Ruiz, if I said your name correctly, probably not, of 34 Bell Street, are requesting the following variances from land use code section 190-16, Table 16-3, one, to encroach two feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback on May Street, and two, to encroach two feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback on Bell Street. Both request to construct a second-story addition onto the existing house. That that motion, that that application be approved. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We do find that it is an older property, if not built before setbacks, certainly the existing setbacks have been there for a while, and the house is already encroaching on those. And it did seem a reasonable use of the property. It is really bringing the old portion of the house more in line with the current portion of the house. It is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, because it does allow reasonable use of the property. It will not adversely affect the property values surrounding parcels. Indeed, we heard no testimony of opposition from any of the neighbors. It's not contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice would be done to, again, allow reasonable use of the property.
Mr. Neely, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? That's four to nothing. Congratulations, your application's been approved. Again, just be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal, but other than that, you can start the building, permit process. All right? Okay.
Do I need to wait the 30 days?
No, no.
Do I need any, like, any progress? Go ahead, evolution.
You don't have to wait the 30 days, but if you do start within the 30 days, you would be doing it at your own risk, in case anybody does want to appeal the decision.
Okay.
But you're free to submit building plans and get moving on it.
All right, thank you for coming. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number two, and open the public hearing for case number three. This is for Nicholas Collard and Catherine Orzak, owners of 3 Ashland Street, Sheet 64, Lot 118, requesting the following variances, from land use code section 190-16, Table 16-3, one, to encroach nine feet into the 25-foot required rear yard setback, and two, to encroach four feet into the 10-foot required left-side yard setback to construct and attach two-story home additions in the I-9 zone, Ward 9. Welcome, just give us your name and address.
Hi, I'm Nick Collard, 3 Ashland Street.
What you want to do?
Yeah, so, like you'd mentioned, I'd like to add a garage with a living space above it, which is attached to the current home. That would infringe on the rear setback by nine feet and the side setback by four feet. My home was built around 1920. It's kind of old. The way the property was divided after that, the more contemporary home behind me, when they subdivided it, they subdivided it with part of my house already encroaching on a setback. So the rear, there's always, already a minor encroachment there. The side encroachment of four feet, that is only a slight corner of what would be the existing garage, not the entire side of the home. I believe it would just be the front, the front corner. A little more about my neighbor's properties in that area, there's a lot of setback infringement already with my direct neighbors. I have one neighbor to the side of me, whose the rear of their home is probably like three feet from the property line. I have a neighbor on the other side of me, whose garage is directly across the property line, so I don't think it would change the aesthetic of the neighborhood or be much different from what has already been done. Basically it.
Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Neely?
This, is this almost doubling the size of the house? I mean, this is pretty significant.
With, yeah, it's adding a garage and a bedroom above the garage, and there'll be a small, I think it's an 11 by 11 room next to where the kitchen is.
So was there any thought, so you wouldn't be in front of the board, just to kind of keep it in a smaller footprint?
Oh, I guess if we tried to keep it in a smaller footprint, we'd probably have to eliminate that 11 by 11 room, because it would be kind of teeny. It wouldn't be much more than a closet, and we'd probably have to reduce the garage to a single-car garage, and then there would be no room for a master bedroom above it anymore, so it would just make the whole project kind of moot after that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the application? Come on up, just give us your name and address, please.
I'm Elizabeth Dinegrin. My husband-
Can you just pull the mic down? Sorry we can't hear.
Oh, sorry.
All right, go ahead.
My name is Elizabeth Dinegrin, and my husband, Victor Dinegrin. We are living behind the house.
What order address are you at?
2 Lee Street, Nashua. So we are, they are very nice neighbors. They are like very considerate. We really like to have them around. But I just wanted to clarify that our fence is a little closer to the back, rear end, so will it affect our structure or anything like that? So just I wanted some clarification on that.
So you're directly to the rear?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Excuse me, ma'am.
So if I can get clarification?
Mr. Neely has a question. Sorry.
So that's okay. So it actually was on my list of questions. So the fence is located, it's not on the, on the property line, the fence is located closer to your house on the, from the property line?
We got the house around 11 years ago. We measured everything, and they said like it is in the property line.
It is.
So we checked that before we got the house.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I don't see anybody in the audience with, anybody else in the audience that would have opposition? So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting.
I'd do not like going first on this one. I'd like to hear what the rest of the board has to discuss on this. I could, I have, I see positives and negatives both ways. This certainly is an interesting-shaped lot, but I think there's ways to make the, make this building a little bit smaller and not be here in front of us. So I'd like to hear what the rest of the board has to say. I'm not, I'm not sold one way or the other yet.
I do support the application. I appreciate Mr. Neely's comments. You know, I am oftentimes also looking for ways it could be done. Maybe something could be smaller and intrude less. But that said, I do feel that a two-car garage is reasonable, and the size of this garage is, you know, to me appears to be about as small as you can make a two-car garage and still be a two-car garage. Sometimes we do see some fairly large ones proposed, but you know, at 24 feet in width, you really couldn't make it smaller and still have a two-car. I did kind of look around. Certainly, there are houses with no garages. There is catty-corner, one with a two-car garage addition, you know, and there's some with one, so that is true. Also, just in looking at the size of the house, the house, just in looking at it, struck me as though it was built to want an addition. It seems almost like a half-house. You know, it seemed that there must have been an intent at some time, and it is a fairly small house, so the desire to increase the living space and to have a two-car garage struck me as reasonable. And, you know, given the odd shape of a lot, it would be tough to do that and not intrude from the setback, so for those reasons, I support the application.
I also support the application. I also support the application. Again, the skewed lot, size is skewed, you know, it's not, it's not perpendicular to the street type of lot line. I don't think there's any other solution than to put the two-car garage that way. And again, that's, you know, as far as things can go, I would say that's almost a minor encroachment. The rear, and I just got some clarification, the existing part of the home is already, it's already in the, yeah, the existing, this is existing part. So the proposed new bedroom, I think that's what it's called, yes, it's going to protrude a little bit more in the rear, but again, with the testimony from the rear neighbor, with the, what's going on in the neighborhood, considering the homes around them with, with almost some of those, some of the structures being right in line, I don't think this is going to be out of character with the neighborhood. And in fact, you know, I agree with Mr. McCarroll, I think it's going to actually improve the neighborhood and some of the values in the neighborhood. So with that, I'm going to approve, I'm going to support the application. Any other discussion? Mr. Sylvia.
I think Mr. McCarroll and Mr. Boucher kind of summed up what I agree is with. I will support this application. I think what the applicant said in regard to the bedroom was telling, in regard to it needs to be a certain size or it doesn't make sense. It looked like there was a shed rather than the garage there, and it seemed like a lot of his neighbors had garages, so this would actually make his house more in tune with the neighborhood rather than less. And as we earlier stated, this is a difficult lot, and also there are other buildings nearby that are near the lot line, so I don't think that's going to be a significant issue.
You have any discussion? I'd like to make a motion. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Nicholas Collard and Catherine Orzak, owners of 3 Ashland Street, Sheet 64, Lot 118, requesting the following variances from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, one, to encroach nine feet into the 25-foot required rear yard setback, and two, to encroach four feet into the 10-foot required left-side yard setback to construct and attach two-story home additions in the IRA Zone Ward 2. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, special conditions of the property is noted as the odd, odd shape of the lot. It's like a skewed lot. The lot is not the smallest lot, but again, the placement of the home on the lot doesn't provide much opportunity to add this reasonable addition within, within the setback. The benefit, we find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values and surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest, and we find a substantial justice would be served. So with that, I make a motion to approve the area variance. Seconded by Mr. McCarroll. Any discussion? All those in favor? Four to nothing. Congratulations. Application's been approved. Again, you've heard the discussion before. There's that 30-day window of appeal, but good luck. Thank you for coming. With that, I'll close the public, I'll close the public meeting for case number three. Questions? Okay, so we have some meeting minutes from March 26. Does anybody have any comments or questions or anything to us?
No comments.
I had one. Go ahead, while I'm looking.
I haven't gotten a chance to see a copy of it, so I'll abstain. Am I allowed to abstain, or?
Well, yeah, I mean, we could always defer it if you feel like you need more time.
That's up to you.
It doesn't have to be approved tonight. They can wait until the next meeting.
Yeah, you can wait.
If you'd like to wait another meeting.
Okay. So we'll, we'll.
That's fine.
Make a motion to defer.
Just defer to the next meeting.
Yeah.
No action taken.
No time.
No, you don't have to vote on it.
Okay. Then there is cases for the next meeting on, on April 23rd. There's four or five cases. I didn't see any, any regional impact, but does anybody else see anything that I'm not seeing?
I do not see any regional impact.
No, I do not either. No.
Regional impact. Is there any other business?
So are we at?
Okay, with that, I will call the meeting adjourned at 7:05.
You were efficient.
Yes, efficient. You are as efficient when you're over there.
Efficiency is good.